I call this meeting of the special meeting of the school board of Monominee Area School District to order.
Tony Verstet?
Here.
Tony, here.
Here.
Heather Klanderman?
Here.
Janice Paulson?
Here.
Amy Riddle-Spalson?
Here.
John Savory?
Here.
David Steyer?
Here.
Jim Spalson?
Here.
Tricia Thompson?
Here.
Alright, we have a forum to conduct business. Next item is agenda order and approval revisions. Does anyone have any revisions to the agenda? Alright, here we go. Next item is the community communications. I remind everyone that the school board welcomes members of the community to make comments to the board about the joys and concerns you may have about our schools. Please remember that our agendas are full and in fairness to others, you must limit your time to three minutes. If you have an issue that requires a response or action, please speak to the teachers or principals first because they are the ones who can best help. Also remember that civility is required. So, I have, first request is Lenny Marshall.
I also wasn't here at the last meeting. I was here by phone and it's hard to hear a lot of things. And so I was just concerned that it would be nice if we could all work together. And I also think that when ever, you know, I'd like to kind of address maybe had it for a minute. I get the feeling that I'm not liked because somebody put something on social media that you didn't like, and I don't get any control over that. But you're an elected official and I'm an elected official and I could criticize many times. But it's just part of...
So my, and I don't want to get into anything, but what happened on social media happened to me personally, not as a board member, but when it starts to impact my family and when a topic is brought up that's not even school board related, that's where I draw the line. And I do not appreciate what was, what happened, but I also don't, did feel like you had my back or you supported me in that decision. Now, what you did is not anything different than I did, but yet you couldn't clear the air that I had done the same thing in our communication. So that is separate because it is a personal matter that these people are referencing that happened years ago that are on, that has nothing to do with the school board. And it was attacking to me personally along with my family. That's the line. Attack me, fine, get him a school board member if you attacked my family? No, that's not it.
Okay.
So I felt like no one, like you didn't care and you didn't, I felt like we weren't a team player at that time as a board member, when we all talk about being a board member and being together. But I did feel like that for you, Amy.
Okay. I appreciate your honesty, but I also would like to say that every day in this district's students are harassed and feel just as bad as they do, but every day, not just in certain circumstance. And that's all I'm going to say.
I know, I agree with you, but I'm just saying.
Thank you.
What you did with that individual is exactly what I said to the other individual. So being attacked for something that I did exactly as you and you didn't stand up for me as a board member, that does hurt.
Given the late in the evening email that we received from Steve Weld, what would it take to move this down in the agenda item into closed session so we all have a little time to process? Because it was definitely later. I think that the message that Mr. Weld did send to the board is incredibly important for all of us to read. And it supports my request to have this as an action item and move forward.
Time for that was when we discussed the agenda.
I apologize then, that's my misunderstanding. I don't have my Roberts ruling in front of me, so...
Well, I asked if there are any, anyone wanting to make any changes to the agenda?
No, that's all that's fine. Then, you know what? Can I make a motion that we vote on reorganizing our board members?
Okay, the motion has been made to reorganize, organize our board members?
I'm sorry, I apologize, our board officers.
Our board officers, and it's been seconded. Discussion, please.
I'm almost at a loss for words, which doesn't happen very often in my life. But I, this is, this is a terrible way to set precedence and I'm trying to figure out what, why would we even do this? I spent so much time reading emails and trying to figure out different, you know, going through these policies and nitpicking every single word to figure out what the heck is going on. I don't, I mean, if we're trying to look more dysfunctional, this is a great way to do it. I, I just cannot go, like, understand why we are, why we're doing this. It's really embarrassing. There's nothing that has been, it's, it's all perceived issues. There's nothing that's been laid out there that says this, gee, this is what Dan has or hasn't done that's specific, that's something that you could be concerned about. I, I'm just, I am totally at a loss as to why we're doing this. And, and so then if we vote and this actually happens because people vote on these new officers, then, okay, so then the next meeting, I ask for it to be placed on the agenda so we can vote on it again and we're going to keep doing this until April, when we're going to reorganize again anyway? I mean, it's just ridiculous. We have better things to deal with and way more important things to do.
I think this vote violates a number of policies and possibly state law. First off, as mentioned, we have a second meeting of the month where we're not supposed to take votes on any issue that likes timely. This obviously is not timely or urgent, so that doesn't happen. Secondly, our policy 174 states that the election must be in April. This is not April, in case you haven't noticed. This was just around the corner. It also states that the term of office for an officer is a year. A year's not up till April. So holding a vote would violate that policy. There is no process, there is no procedure, and there are no criteria anywhere in our policies for changing board officers in this district. Our, our policy has also referenced state law 120.05, which lays out in state law the process procedures for electing officers. And it also states that it is an annual election and when, exactly what day and what is certain timeframe. The other really important word in there is the word shall. When you see the word shall in law, that means you must do this. That's the way the law works. Correct, Mr. Weld? Shall means yes, you will do this.
Oh, that's the meaning. Of course, the word shall is different than the word may.
Correct.
Depends on the context of what you're talking about.
Right, but in the law, it says you shall do this and very specifically lays out a date and lays out a timeframe. Okay? So that's, that's what the statute. We also got reference from Mrs. Reich. She had contacted the DPI and asked them about this question, and it actually referenced the attorney general's opinion, which can rather obscure and obsolete since it was written in 1979. If you talk to an attorney general today, which we have one and he's going to be leaving shortly, and we have another one, they may have completely different opinions. But what the DPI said is that the only way an officer could be removed from a school board is by a court or cause. Okay, cause generally involves breaking the law or dereliction of duty, none of which we have here. So we're looking at incredibly legally sketchy action here. One at the meat lawsuits, lawsuits of this type where you end up arguing over law and this law and that law, it can like, take on a life of their own, they can last forever, and they can get incredibly expensive. So I, this is just so legally sketchy. As Trish said, why are we doing this? There is absolutely no reason for it. So I would like to make a motion to table this. So I'm making a motion to table this action.
Table it indefinitely?
Table it indefinitely, yes.
Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second that one.
Okay, the motion is made to table it indefinitely. Question on the table. Requires a majority vote to do that. And so voting A will be in the affirmative to table and voting B will be...
So can you define what you mean by indefinitely? I, I just want to make sure I understand what we're going to say.
We're done with it.
So never, never again?
Well, you've got a reorganization meeting in April.
I'm just, I'm just thinking of the future. If we're, if we're table it indefinitely, to me, that's, could be next year. We could be in a situation where something is going on and we want to do it. I'm just saying.
Well, as, as Margaret said, we only have policy meetings. We need to come up with a process, procedure, and criterion for removing an officer, so we, we don't have that.
But, but that, when you're saying indefinitely, though, to me, that's, you're not creating anything ever, is what I'm kind of, that's why I'm asking clarification, what you're meaning by that.
No, the point is we're not going to vote on this issue without proper policies, procedures, criteria.
Well, that's different than what...
And it's part of the law.
What I mean, what you just said there is different.
We won't, we won't remove, we won't remove an officer unless we do it properly. We're not doing this properly.
We're not, have you researched it?
This is so sketchy, I mean, this is...
But the other way to remove a board member is to get a petition signed to have him permanently removed.
That's a recall.
I mean, it could be the same thing, I mean...
Yeah, well, right now, yeah, it's, we, we don't want to vote on it. I don't want to vote on it. I want to just, just go away, move on.
At a later date. The questions have been prebided.
I'm just thinking, I just don't want to set us up for us having this issue a year down the road, two years, if there is something down the road, or even 10 years down the road. I just don't want to set us up for what we do now.
In 10 years down the road, this is not going to be on this vote, on this motion. This is, be done with.
So what, how you worded that question is how I was interpreting it with indefinitely. I wasn't interpreting it, that's why I was seeking clarification from your...
If we, if we create a policy, then it's irrelevant. If we redo a policy so that we have a process, a procedure, and criteria, then you're fine.
Oh, I agree.
So...
I just was seeking clarification on what you were trying to do.
Postponing indefinitely would then allow the board to come back and consider the policies that would allow this to happen. At this point, we have no policy, we have no procedure.
No, I know, I know.
And so I have, even if we make, you have this vote, there's no mechanism to execute it, so we would just basically move on to the next item. Is anyone, Steve Weld is our school board attorney, and if anybody does wish to, Jim has already, if anyone wished to ask him a question?
I, I do have a question. When you, Dan, contacted Mr. Weld on your behalf?
Yes.
How is that paid? Is that personal funds or is that school district funds that will be paid for that conversation?
Well, if there's a charge for it, then I'll pay for it, but I've been...
I just was curious, I, I've not...
It was a three-minute conversation and basically I requested that he take a careful look at this.
Speaking of legal information or legal issues, it's very, very expensive. Anyone that's ever had to hire a lawyer will know that. If we spend time on this and we use lawyers to try to decide what's right, what's wrong, all the way to go, we are stealing from our kids and we are stealing from our teachers and we're stealing ours.
Yeah, absolutely.
I'm just, again, I'm scanning through Mr. Weld's email and it says, "School districts may," let's see, sorry, let me go back, "Section 17.131 provides that any appointed officer of school districts may be removed as followed by the body that appointed him or her at pleasure. Removal of any such officer by a body shall be by a majority vote of all of the members thereof." We're all here, and there, there is a section of us that are not competent in your abilities, and we are not competent in how you behave as a school board president. I'm, I'm not going to sugarcoat it, I apologize.
No, do me the honor.
Nope, I, but we're here, this is what's happening, we're going to be honest. I, there's no reason not to be. And we can go through policy after policy and for what one part of the policy says, I can probably find something that I disagree with, or you can read it in a different context. So that's the reasoning for my motion, and you know what? Jim made a motion, we'll, we can vote on his as well. I, I'm fine with that, but I just, being that I was the one that asked it to be brought onto the agenda, I felt that I should at least speak my piece and say something.
Jim?
So the law that you referenced, 17.11, is not the law that our policy is based on. That is 120.55, so it's irrelevant. Until we change the policy, if you want to include that into our policy, maybe you have to do a policy review, you have to change the policy. Otherwise, you're acting outside of our policies because the legal reference is only 120.55. If you look at the policy, there's one other policy reference, but it's not that one that has to do with how you count the votes. But the policy reference on our policy, the legal reference is 120.55, and that is what counts. That is what our policy is based on, not on this other issue. If you want that one to count, then you have to change the policy. So until you change the policy, you can't change the law. Just, just...
Mr. Weld, what's your thought on this?
Well, I think the issue is the question of state law as compared to district policy. And Joe contacted me Tuesday last week, Dan contacted me on Wednesday last week, and basically asked the same question. You've asked the School Board Association's attorney for opinion, what's your opinion? So to the extent I'm stealing from your kids, I'm trying to provide advice to the district in terms of what its options are legally, which is the law, and then under your policy, you know, that's your call. But I can tell you, and the statutes, Jim's not quite correct, in that there's two statutes on point. It's 17.13 and it's 120.05. The attorney general, Democratic Attorney General, 2000, or 1979, Ronson Appola, issued a formal opinion in which he said, "Under the statutes, a school board can remove a board member at its pleasure by majority vote." In other words, there is no cause standard, and there is no, no preclusion of doing that. The attorney general's opinion was followed by an opinion the following year by the legal counsel for the Department of Public Instruction, an individual by the name of Max Ashwell. He concurd. The same year, Jim Clark, who was at that time was the law firm, ultimately has become, became later than Clark and now boardman at Clark, is the School Board Association attorney, has been or was for a long time, obviously, the firm still continues to be the association's attorney. He issued an opinion which basically said the same thing. Attorney general has opined that a board may, at its pleasure, by majority vote, remove an officer of the board from its position. Gets a little bit complicated, but by and large, that's the legal authority in that board, on its own motion, without cause, can remove a board officer, not a board member, a board officer. The issue that Attorney Clark commented on, he said, you know, boards should always undertake reasonable discretion in carrying out this apparent authority to summarily remove an officer. However, adhering into the discredence of the removal and having any kind of substantive reason for the removal is not statutorily required. Now, there have been some discussions regarding the fact that there's a term. Well, the statute does not establish a term. Establish, the statutes establishes an election on or above Fourth Monday in April, and the following year, obviously, there's going to be another election, but there is no term. It doesn't say one-year term. Our policy does say one-year term, but the statute doesn't. So arguably, and I think pretty clearly, the Department of Justice of the State of Wisconsin, the Department of Public Instruction of the State of Wisconsin, and the Wisconsin School Board Association, the board has the authority to remove at its pleasure. Whether that's good policy, that's your call. And whether it's consistent with district policy, that's, that's an issue for you to resolve. But by statute, there is not a term.
So do these attorney general rulings, because they've never been run through the legislature, actually have the same weight as law?
Well, it's an interpretation of the statute, Jim. Just as a court decision on the statute...
So had the court ever looked at this?
Or has not looked at it, but the attorney general has a true opinion on it, and those of us who are advocates, then on behalf of parties, have to look at those attorney generals and decisions. I mean, it's not like Joe Schmoll, attorney from Albany or Oak Flair or Milwaukee or Madison, came up with an opinion. It's a opinion of the legal officer of the State of Wisconsin, and that's required, required to look at that. And it could be overturned by the courts, the courts look at them too, and the courts give them deference. How much deference? Supreme Court this year said we have to look differently at agency decisions and guidance as they don't have the, the preferred deference that was previously imposed. But the fact of the matter is, you've got three significant legal officers applying the same way. The board has the authority to do it. Now, I caution the board, you know, that's not something that should be done wholly alone. I mean, that's what Attorney Clark was saying in his opinion. This is something that needs to be considered carefully and, and gone to there. But there is no standard and there is no procedure other than statutory or the policy procedure that's in place for a board member to raise an issue. And I apologize for the lateness of the opinion, but obviously we have holiday in there and, you know, it was difficult to get something out before the day.
So, excuse me. So this opinion from the attorney general basically, from my understanding, says that an election by the school board is really not an election, it's just an appointment. Is that correct?
Basically, all three of the opinions say that the election is in effect a process of utilizing the appointed powers of the board. The board is appointing its president by electing him. So again, it's a semantic type of distinction, but all three of those attorneys have said, this is what we think the law is. The more recent, the Harvard Public Instruction memo, I'm guessing, is a reference to Section 1713, three, which provides that removal of a school board member as compared to an officer requires, basically, the board can't remove a member from the board. The only way to remove a board member is through vote. One, the only way is through vote, that was good. The, the, the way to get rid of a board member, remove a board member, is one, file a petition. The board will file a petition with the circuit court, and the court will consider the petition or cause. The other way of going in is what the board was referencing, then, is a recall process. Unfortunately, we've had a lot of recall experience in the state recently. It's expensive. Talk about expensive, a recall's expensive. So, I mean, those are, but those are only two ways to remove a board member as compared to a board officer. And it gets even more complicated because a board member is an officer of the district, whereas Dan and the other officers of the board are officers of the board, president, the vice president, clerk, clerk of the treasurer. So semantics make a difference, it's often saying under the statutes. And even though 1713 is labeled appointed offices, the attorney general, DPI, legal assistance counsel, and the WSB attorneys have all consistently said, we think that that 1713 one applies to the removal of a board officer. Again, I caution the board, the school board attorney said, this is not something that we should, that we should be doing every day. In other words, it's, it's not something to be taken lightly.
Again, the DPI, and when was that moment? When did they concur?
The DPI opinion was in February of 2080. It was reported in something called the DPI newsletter. Unfortunately, I was practicing at that time. I don't remember it, but I, we have been able to research and find it. Similarly, the School Board Association letter was in the school news, Wisconsin School News, a monthly publication. You see the legal comment that's in that. Jim Clark is the firm that does it. Jim Clark is D. Clark, a boardman at Clark. He wrote the opinion in May of 2008. Fact of the matter is, it's been 38 years, there's never been a court challenge on that opinion.
You said 2008, you meant 1980?
1980, I'm sorry, because I'm a moron.
So there's actually no court precedent, it's just an opinion?
It is just the opinion of the chief legal officer of the state, chief legal officer of the Department of Public Instruction, and the chief legal officer of the School Board Association.
At that time, 40 years ago, nearly 40 years ago.
Well, you, as you know, the WSB attorneys have been involved in this process before me because I would ask to kind of second guess. And attorney butler is on the opinion that the earlier, earlier decisions are still valid.
So the attorney general basically was saying that the state legislature erred in saying that we are electing school board officers? Is that what I, what I understand?
No. The statute 1713 talks about the removal of all sorts of municipal employees. School board employees, employees on towns, employees of, you know, villages, all different types of bodies, and they elect, they addressed it. The statute, the title of the section is not significantly, the content of the section is significant. It does reference appointed powers. The 120.05 talks about the difference between appointed and election, and the attorney general, in his opinion, specifically said, the board was exercising its appointed powers by electing. In other words, they use the words interchangeably if that's the provision. So the board officers are there, and that's...
So the attorney general is saying that the school board should annually elect, and really, really, what the attorney general is saying, that's a misuse of the word electing, it should be annually appoint. Is that what the attorney general was saying?
He's saying they're, they're inter, they flip her up, that they were to be read simultaneously or synonymously.
So you can pick a truth, right?
According to the attorney general, yes.
And so unless it becomes challenged?
If it would be challenged, the courts would look at any case law, any decisions. They would look at, if there is no case law, they would look at the interpretation of the statutes, and they would look at guidance from the chief legal officer of the state, from the Department of Public Instruction, and from the School Board Association. I mean, that's, those are the people that deal with these kinds of issues every day.
So would they go back to the attorney general's opinion back then, or would they ask the current attorney general?
My belief is they would go back to the, or the 1979 opinion and utilize that and then make their own decision on the merits, but they would give a deference, they would give a strong deference, I believe.
Even though, the mind-reading of the opinion doesn't seem like it's sprung with words. If the attorney general uses words like apparently, some other words that definitely don't seem to be saying he has a strong, has a strong, a strong case.
Well, I think what the attorney general is saying is, there is room, room for interpretation here. This is the way I interpret it, and here's why I interpret it this way. This is the way I interpret it, and why I interpret it this way.
I would just, I'm sorry. Okay. I would just like to clarify what you said. You said that so far, nobody's ever used that to remove officers. Is that what you're saying?
No, that's not true.
Okay.
The goal is that it challenges the decision to use that process to remove a board officer.
So to your knowledge, you have no idea whether this has ever been used before?
Oh, it hasn't been used.
Oh, when?
Well, on a number of occasions, Attorney Butler indicated that he's aware of at least three.
He's aware of three, but he never told us what the three are, so we have no idea what the context was.
Hand or hand it to you?
Yeah, it could have been that the Board, no. It could have been some really serious issues there.
None that I'm aware of, yeah, that's all I can say.
David?
I'd like to amend the motion to table indefinitely to lay on the table.
I'm not sure that it's a main call.
Could you say that again? I'm sorry.
I'd like to amend the motion to table indefinitely to lay on the table.
Again, if I might, this is, you're getting into some kind of arcane, arbitrary order procedures here, but the concern, I think that Dave is raising on Dave's motion, is motion to table ordinarily has a time plan. I don't know, table this until the next meeting, I want to table this until Superintendent has an opportunity to report back to us with information. I'm going to table this until hell feeds is over. Uh, Mike, he's with the super bowl. I mean, so it's ordinarily table has, the conflict is that you have a policy which allows a board member to raise an issue at a subsequent board meeting in terms of raising an agenda item. I don't think motion to table would block a board member from doing that at a subsequent board meeting. Similarly, the statutes provide, one twenty eleven provides, the board member to ask for a special board meeting on a specific issue. Or ask them to meet. That's the word chat. And so my point is, by tabling it, it doesn't mean it may not fly up against the action of any individual board member asking for a special board meeting or an opportunity to raise an agenda item, which then Dan, as the head of Board President, and Joe, as the administrator, would address and put requests under our policy. Those two can then say, can you change your proposal to this? The board member can say, no, I want it the way I have it. And ask them on the board, the way I read your policy.
That's not what Dave was saying. You just interjected into the meeting and gave an opinion on something that was not what Dave was suggesting. It's not at all what Dave is saying.
Yes, I.
Let's, I would accept, I mean, I need the motion, I would accept your change. That's right.
Okay.
So we have a motion, I have a second. We have a minute.
See the motion by David, second by Penny. But you made a friendly amendment, did you have accepted it?
Yeah, I said, I'll accept the friendly amendment.
Okay, so would you please repeat your?
My motion was to amend, the motion to lay on the table or to table indefinitely to lay on the table.
All right, so the motion has been made to amend the previous motion to postpone indefinitely to lay on the table. And.
Motion by David.
Motion by David and second by Penny. And to vote, the A would be to say, vote for David's amendment, or no is to vote no for David's amendment.
But then Jim said that you agreed to that, correct?
And Jim agreed to that, yes. He included that.
Now, the issue is the motion to lay on the table.
Yeah.
And that's the whole motion.
Yeah.
The amended motion.
Right, exactly, yeah.
So now we're voting.
Just a motion.
Lay on my motion to lay this on the table.
Yes.
Correct.
Can, can I just clarify what is lay on the table?
Get a pillow. I mean, just going away for now, we may talk about it later.
Okay, okay.
It, it doesn't.
I want to make sure because I want to vote my way.
Either way, can, you know, motions, these motions can be asked for reconsideration.
Correct.
This one, please.
Do you want to take a vote then? Rock, roll?
Yes.
Penny?
Yes.
Tanya?
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Tricia?
Yes.
Okay. The motion has been approved, so we will lay this on the table for now and move on to discussion items. State accountability report card. Oh, Steve, yes, thank you so much for coming.
Thank you, Steve.
We won't, will we be going into closed session? That's the other question.
The Board can decide it later.
Well, if we do, I think the issue is for him to be here to discuss.
For, for his pleasure.
We want to get to the discussion.
All right, okay. Thank you, thank you very much. Okay. Discussion item eight, state accountability report card.
Okay, so talking about good news, the school district exceeded expectations on the state accountability report card. And we've talked a lot as a Board, how we use multiple measures in Menominee to determine the success of our schools, but we definitely saw an increase in our district report card this year. And Brian has shared all the report card information with the school board. I know he wanted to point out just a couple items, and then if board members have any questions, I'll, we can go over them. So Brian, go ahead.
All right, thank you very much, Joe. So as Joe shared, we exceeded expectations. The district as a whole, one of our schools, actually, it's just to say, two of our schools are on elementary, and middle school moved into the exceeds expectations category this past year. That's up one level from where each of those buildings were in the district regardless of this year. Happy to say that all of our buildings, since the beginning of the school accountability report cards, have either met exceeded or significantly exceeded expectations on our school. Ritter Heights, for the second year in a row, significantly exceeds expectation. That's a testament to the hard work of the staff and the leadership of building that building. And then when you take a look at the report cards as a whole, there's four different priority areas, and the district this past year exceeded that state comparable in each of those four priority areas. And the middle school this last year exceeded in all four of those areas. And I'm pointing that out because that's the first time since the issue, the state for, the state accountability report card issued with the middle school achieved that feat. So a lot of good things happening there. And eighth grade math moved into a level where they exceed the state comparable, something that doesn't happen for a few years at the middle school. You can see that we have a few areas that we've identified as priorities. Those are the same areas when I talked about student achievement in some previous meetings that I highlighted. So we continue to focus on those areas, and we'll continue to do that. And we're seeing growth in each of those areas, but they're going to continue to be a focus for us as we move forward. So when you take a look at the report in preparation for tonight's meeting, if there are any specific questions, I'm happy to entertain those at this time, but we are very, very pleased with the report through this line this year.
Just a couple more things to add. So throughout the year, we continue to monitor achievement in our school district through the different standardized tests. And while we want to continue to show growth and have a high achievement level, the nice thing about the state report cards compared to just looking at strict achievement, it does factor in those other categories like Brian mentioned. And especially in our district, of what we're doing in our schools where every single student has a time during the day where they get some sort of personalized programming, whether it be remedial programming to try to get them up to grade level, or whether it be enrichment programming to challenge them in areas that are excelling them, we think that's really helped our growth score. There's certainly more work to do, but I think our students and staff really, really deserve praise for their hard work. I think the alignment of our curriculum instruction with state standards. I think the work that our teachers have done to really try to eliminate various gaps and overlaps in our curriculum, I think that's made a difference. And I also think the professional development that we provided through our instructional coaches in the area of English Language Arts and Mathematics have had a positive impact. So again, there's only one measure, and we're not necessarily patting ourselves on the back like we won the Super Bowl, as Jim mentioned, but definitely, this is a positive thing for our school district, and really am proud of the students and staff that did such a good job. Are there any questions tonight?
Do we know how many students opt out of the testing?
Off the top of my head, I don't. I know we are well under the state's goal of having test participation of ninety-five percent of our students. There was a period of time where if you exceeded that, you would receive a deduction. The state removed that a year ago as a deduction area, as far as test participation, but I don't, we'll, we could do some digging if you want a specific number. Okay.
Any other questions?
I just wanted to thank you congratulations. I think we should throw them a party. That sounds good. Maybe milk and cookies or something.
Yes.
Yes, that is, that is what we can use. I'm only glad you're there, and I would like to personally thank you to your principals that really helped getting that to be great and to be. And there's still room for improvement, so.
Yep.
So keep, keep doing what you're doing.
And we will be visiting each site with a cheese and cracker tray and some holiday cheer here in the next few weeks, but, so then that's okay with Dan, I'll be right into the next item, report card two point oh. And this really is something unique to Menominee, and this is something unique that was emphasized by our school board, is that while we definitely recognize that, you know, our core mission really has to do with the academic preparation of our students, we also understand that the whole child approach is critical, and we really emphasize that in Menominee. So in addition to the state report card, that really has been directed from the state level, if you recall, last year, we created our report card two point oh, which is a little bit of a local flavor. And the report card two point oh talks about some of the other measures that we use, and it's not all inclusive, there's, there's a lot of ways that we can measure the success of our schools and our students, but I know Brian wanted to talk to us for a minute about report card two point oh.
Yep, so with this being our second year, a couple of things I wanted to highlight. Last year, we included the Global Education Achievement Certifications, or the GACT piece. That number is an area where we continue to see growth. Each year, we offer that program. We were one of the original districts in the state of Wisconsin to have that certification available. Another piece that we did this year that's a little different than last year, we made the report card a little bit longer. We included and enhanced some reporting on our elementary levels. That was an area we didn't have as much on last year. We'd like to point out, I feel it was very well rounded, experienced not at any one particular level, but throughout the entire district, so we wanted to update the report card two oh to reflect that as well. The other thing I want to point out is the career and technical education areas. I talked about our state skills certifications, certifications, youth apprenticeships, and those types of things. While those numbers in some areas dipped a little bit from last year, some of the certifications that students can participate in shifted a little bit, but the reason why I'm drawing that, drawing my attention to that area is that actually is an area that state report card, the DPI issues every year, next year will include information related to CTE in the report card. And each of the next three years, we're going to be phasing in some more of these areas that typically we refer to as soft skills or career readiness. And that those CTE completers and house trainers are areas that we're going to start to see. You know, when we take a look at, at what we have included in here, it is just, I think, a nice snapshot of some of the other things that we offer throughout the district. And you can see we added, offered last year, our student activity counts or participation counts from the middle school to represent that six-twelve experience, and try to pull in a few of those at the elementary levels. Any questions? I'm happy to address those too.
One thing I'd like to point out on report card two point oh is that we measure the students with five or fewer documented behavior incidents, and it's ninety-four percent. So ninety-four percent of the students had five or fewer documented behavior incidents. We'd like to see that a hundred, obviously, but, you know, sometimes when we hear about all the problems in our society, or all the problems in our schools, and there are challenges, don't get me wrong, but when you look at it, when ninety-four percent of the students have had behavior at that level, considering how much they're in our schools, I think we have a lot to be proud of.
David? I think it's interesting that we had four hundred and seventy-nine students participate in the spelling bee, and two hundred and sixty-seven in the track and field. So, you know, we had pretty strong participation in the spelling bee, and the arts program was under six hundred students that participated. I really like this report. We just need that.
I think, yeah, I really like this version of the work compared to last year's, but more for our resolution.
I would agree. Thank you.
And the nice thing is, as we go through the years, we'll be able to start tracking it over time. You know, it's still kind of in the infancy phase, but it will, we need to see how those numbers change over time.
Yeah, and I would like to thank our, our leadership team and our, and our staff at the district, because we did put a call out to say where are some of the other things that would be good to highlight in here, so suggestions from the Board, from the end and from the staff, we'll, we'll give me this what it is, so.
Final question, Brian, did the state skills certificate just in decrease from one year to this year? So was the classes bigger at the high school perhaps that the numbers didn't?
So a couple of things. One, some of the recognized skill certificate areas have changed. Our students when they complete can, we can apply for some reimbursement dollars there, so some of those categories have changed. And then also due enrollments, in some cases, if there are fewer students in a class, then there are fewer students who actually can take those.
Is that mine?
Yeah.
Any other questions? Thank you, very good, very good. Very proud of our district. Okay, moving on. So teach you planning update?
I skipped lunch.
Oh, I did. Nice. Discuss the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty budget plan.
I know how Dan feels. I feel like we just got done with all that last budget.
Didn't we just vote on this?
Yeah, we just, the Board just approved this year's budget a couple of weeks ago, or a few weeks ago. But it is a twelve-month-a-year process, and you can see in the timeline that Leah put together, that we're already well into planning for the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty school budget. So Leah put together the timeline, it's the same timeline that we followed over recent years. Leah, is there anything you'd like to point out on it?
No, it, it really hasn't changed much in the past few years. This is kind of the outline that we follow, and, and if anybody has any questions, or you'd like to see something a little bit different, we can certainly take a look at that, but it seems to flow well with, with the dates of the mid-year budget hearing, and then the deadlines for earlier retirement and, and such, so.
Leah, one thing I'd like to point out, and it seems more recently, there's been questions about the budget process, and, you know, the involvement that people have in the development of the budget, and those are really good questions, but I think it's important to know that the site level, the classroom level, is very involved in the building of the district budget. Certainly, you know, there's going to be district function as well, but. Certainly, you know, there's going to be district function as well, but a lot of the heavy lifting on the budget happens at the building muscle when the principals work with the teaching staff and when the department directors work with the different departments to make their budget requests. And then that comes to the district and we go from there. So there's a lot of involvement at the building level. A lot of that's what happens here in the late winter and early spring. And then by the time we get towards the end of the school year, that's when Leah really has to try to mesh everything together. And we do the best that we can to offer the best budget possible to provide the most services for our students. Probably the largest piece of the budget is staffing. I think we all know that. And with our health insurance the way it's been, that definitely helps. The fact that we're having another 0% renewal on our health insurance, a year that will start on January 1st. But still, when the board gets the staffing plan late this winter or early next spring, that's probably the biggest impact that we have on our budget. So we'll continue to follow the plan in here that includes the staffing plan. We are having a mid-year budget hearing on January 14th. That'll be 5:00 here prior to the board meeting, about a half hour. And at that point, Leah will run through several of the major trends that impact our budget and that'll kind of set the stage for moving forward. Any questions?
Is that hearing open to the public for questions?
Yes, yeah, the hearing at 5:00, January 14th is open to the public. Anybody can come. You know, we don't get into the detail of how many pencils we're buying or anything like that, but Leah has some really good graphs that have been put together over time that show things like health insurance costs, retirement costs, some staffing demographics, things like that. It is somewhat similar to what we presented at the annual meeting when we have the budget hearing in August, but there is a little more detail to it.
Next one for people who might have questions.
Yes.
I would just add that into the advertised, well, I know even the advertised really low level, I don't want to come, but there's still people out here, so budget hearing, January 14th, you're Jack Spader. Now listen.
You're here.
Ask questions.
All right. I agree. Be here. Dan, any more questions? All right. I have to explain. On our screens here, the item that we're going to be discussing is highlighted in orange. And I guess I didn't see the switch from the one to the next and I just changed a little bit pretty fast on that. I just have to look at the orange one and just say that one. Not jump ahead, okay. All right. Now the strategic planning update.
It's kind of anticlimactic after all that. There really isn't a whole lot to report strategic planning. Other than that, I do have a conference call with Studer that's going to be this week, Thursday. At that point, I'm going to be talking to Joanne Sterke about where Studer is at and the initial analysis of the strategic planning data. We are hoping to schedule a meeting earlier than the previously scheduled February meeting, but that's often depend on where Studer's at and if they have the data categorized enough to the point where some analysis can be done by the steering committee. But I am expecting that we are going to have a meeting before February. I'll report back at the next meeting how the conference call goes.
Any questions? Yeah, I'm glad that you're considering that. A number of people requested that we meet before February.
Well, it's kind of a blessing and a curse because we had so much participation with our surveys and then we had such a high number of listening sessions, even though the listening sessions weren't highly attended, there's just a lot of data for Studer to put together. But I'm thinking they'll meet the ball on that.
Good, good, good. I'm glad that, and I'm glad they have a lot of work to do. That's good for us. Okay. And it goes to orange to E, discuss new course proposals for 2019, 2020.
Okay, Brian, could you go ahead and take this one?
Yep. Sorry. So, you know, as we get to this time of the year, we start looking ahead at scheduling for next year. This year, we have one new course that we're bringing forward for recommendation for your approval to offer at Menominee High School. The course is within the math department, a course entitled Math for Technical Trades. It's a hope that by offering this class, we have it transcripted with CBTC. And for next school year, there's a process that would allow one of our math teachers to be able to teach that class in a dual-credit format, which means that, well, the students would earn simultaneous credit at Menominee High School and at CBTC for that class. It would be targeted towards students who are looking at further in their education in field of transportation, machine tool, and electronic applications. And elective courses that feeds those programs at CBTC. As far as the recommendation coming through from the department, we currently have several transcripted credits in our current tech ed area. This would be our first ploy into an area outside of current technical education to offer this experience to students who may or may not, you know, be in a CTE course. We definitely do anticipate a fair amount of overlap between students in current tech ed taking this class, but they wouldn't necessarily have to do that. So our department is recommending that, has been working with CBTC and our current tech ed coordinator, Ryan Starey, on the development of the course. We also have one other course change that's included. That one wouldn't need to be voted on by the board, included more for informational purposes. Currently at the high school, we run two separate algebra II classes, an algebra II course and a course that's entitled Algebra II. The department is at this point kind of building administration recommending of the offer just one algebra II course because they are comparable rigor at this point in time as updated to our current state standards. They feel that it is somewhat redundant in nature. Any questions? I can answer those.
Just in general, on math, like how high do you go if you can teach trigonometry, calculus, intro, minority, what was that?
Yep, so we offer calc, pre-calc, you know, as far as statistics, AP Statistics course, depending on enrollment. This course would fit in for a student in a sequence. Most students would probably take this their senior year after they completed their three required credits as a class. Because we only require three credits, most students fulfill those by the time they get done with their junior year. We know, you know, the research shows that if a student takes a year off, they use those skills as a back end, they're putting these on a more of a flight setting.
But Brian, they can also go above and beyond and take classes at south, which are endless.
Yep, and that's a good point, when we take a look at, you know, the courses that are available. We have, we've read that report a handful of times over the years.
David.
Enhanced Algebra II, is that the only class right now that you're taking out?
That's correct.
I'm wondering, the math for technical trades, that's, are you thinking about maybe possibly creating a sequence so that it could be one and two?
So I think maybe just to speak to that a little bit, at CBTC, they currently offer a separate course in math, a transportation math, a machine tool, and electronics math course. In conversation with our colleagues at CBTC, they are actually, the process of melding those all into one because they feel that those courses are very redundant in nature. So that's a piece that our instructors have been working with. What CBTC does during the transcription process is they provide us their course outline as far as the resources that they utilize, textbooks, provide us those titles, and we need to be in alignment with those. As far as the sequence, this would be a standard course that would come after the existing sequence that students would take. One of the things that we've had discussion about would be our students with special needs, you know, how do they fit into this as far as what supports do we provide, just like we would with any class, but the department has been, you know, looking at that. We don't want to make this an exclusionary course, make sure that it's something that's accessible to all of our students.
That's wonderful. I like that very much. Yeah, I was just thinking of that because so much of the technical trades now, they're getting so advanced in robotics and things like that, there's so much more math.
And the very appealing piece to this is the fact that students would have to earn dual credit.
Right, exactly. That's wonderful. Any other questions?
I think I kind of answered your, this is being developed both with the math department and the tech ed department together?
So we have an established relationship with CBTC through our current tech ed department with our tech ed coordinator. So Ryan has worked with a number of staff in the CTE department on the transcription process. So because of his background and knowledge with that, he's providing support to the math department as to what this process would look like since we have yet to do that outside of current tech ed.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Where's the orange bar now? Board policy 111, board leadership. And so I think, I think at this point, I would, I put that on the board agenda and I think at this point, I would just like to not speak to it unless anyone else to this. I choose not to speak to it. Does anyone else want to speak to this? David.
I guess I want to thank the committee members for their input. Warren, appreciate your comments tonight on that. As far as clarification on the non-careers group. And John, I assure you, we still work together. I still consider the board my friend. Even though we have our disagreements and that, at the end of the day, when we walk out of here, we're still a team. And if you watched before the board meeting started, we were still joking around and stuff. For me, it's more of a technical issue as far as how the president operates and we have advocates in the school district, we're all advocates, but we also have structure and I think my thing was working more through the administrator for some of those issues rather than outside of the administrator for some of those issues. We can wander a ton of detail, but I think even, Dan would agree, I think we've all learned something in this process, you know, as far as how the board operates. We did have a board retreat that at the end of the May discussed this issue, you know, May 31st. So it's something we've been working on for a while. It didn't just happen, it's just things that have been thrown out.
We do have another board retreat coming up.
Yeah, next week. Is it really next week?
December 4th.
I gotta add, you know. Just so the public knows, you know, things might seem rough and that, but it's, we're all passionate about what we believe and I love the district and I don't care what side of the eye or how you look at stuff, we all have our beliefs and how we think things should be done and that. And we wouldn't be here, the nine of us, if we didn't care about it and the same with you folks that came tonight. Same thing, you guys care about the community and our schools and so sometimes it morphs into, you know, what you saw. But I think at the end of the day, we still walk out of here and we're proud of our schools and what the district does and we're 100%.
Thank you, David. Anyone else? So we are now at the discussion of board leadership, changing board leadership.
We've already been over all this?
Yeah.
I'm going to tell the stuff you already discussed.
Does anyone have anything else to add at this point? Okay, well, let's move on. Review of extracurricular staff contract requests.
So this is the monthly report. You can see there's winter activities beginning, so there's many more contracts for various coaches and advisors, so those are for the board review. Are there any questions?
I just have one question. And you may be able to clarify this in the hours or maybe something, but it seems interesting to me that the coaches seem to get quite a bit of money compared to people that work with like Drumline and other kinds of, like, activities on sex sports, that's just great.
Yeah, the pay really has to do with the amount of time and the amount of responsibility that they have. Some events might only meet periodically, whereas some activities is every single night and then pretty much the weekends too.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I have a question about that too. I remember, and I don't remember the exact question I asked back when I first started, but I was trying to figure out, yeah, kind of what Ian was saying, like one point versus four points versus, you know, zero points, which some of these programs don't get any points.
Right.
And like, maybe you would clarify this, but do we still have this, you know, in the future to review, to look at all of the different points and who's got more?
Yep, and that's actually one of the board approved goals for this year, one of the, what's it, 27 goals? 37? I don't know, can't keep track. We have a lot of goals this year, but that's one of them and Samantha's already put a timeline together. But I will say that even with the review, a lot of what we have is pretty standardized. If you look at the programming, some programs are fully district sponsored, some are partially district sponsored, and some of them, you know, there's a long history that goes back to the collective bargaining agreements and such as well. But if you look at the employee handbook, there's an appendix that can describe some of it.
Some, but not a ton of detail. And that's part of what I'm just trying to wrap my head around the goal. And then how some are sponsored and some are not.
Yeah, if you have a question about specific one or a few or whatever it is, the best thing you can probably do is either send me an email or come and see me and we can get the information for you. Because there's a unique history behind many of these activities that we have.
Yeah, I share in that, trying to figure that out and it seems to be, anyway. Any other questions, comments? Items related to board committees, reports, meeting.
So check your calendar. The first item on there is December 4th, board retreat. Then we do have the regular meeting on December 10th. There is no special medium scheduled at the end of December, I believe that's Christmas Eve. And then we go into January with the mid-year budget during the regular meeting, the state educational convention, and then the special school board meeting. Those are already on the calendar. Certainly, if something comes up, we can add to that, but that's what we have coming up for the next two months.
Any questions? At this point, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. The movement's seconded. Well, in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Yes, you too.
This whole grant system, I didn't know that.
That means that.
I didn't think there was one. I thought it was.
It's something better.
Yeah, I haven't heard this one actually.